As much as the supervisor felt like bringing this, I love the causeway. So on the plan, if you would have your engineer indicate the road margin that was effective for February seventh, just have them draw it out. If you would also have him put the zoning of the adjacent tracks on there and then the current note up building five, just make that jive with the rest of the plan. Just because it's note number five looks like it was an oversight. Indicate where the gas main and the power lines are on the property. Put this little statement that the township is by approving and executing his plan in no way undertakes any responsibility with regards to stormwater runoff to what has archaeological sites and other environmental requirements or matters. Further, the township undertakes no responsibility for operating any activities at the land development. Basically, it's a disclaimer to cover us. And then finally, just make sure you get all of your third-party permits. And then finally, is there any lights that are going to be attached to this building?
On the outside?
Yes. Okay. And the only reason why I brought it up is because Jeff and I go back far enough that on the other side of the main building, there used to be a couple of lights there that we went around a couple of times just to get the shield.
I remember.
But based on the foregoing, with compliance with my letter dated April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, we would recommend approval, preliminary and final approval of the Allegheny Steel Distributor Center.
On Mr. Clay, there may be two lights on the front of it. I can check, but it sits far enough back where it's not going to bother Route nine-ten at all. It's not even going to be seen from... The building that exists there is forty-five wide by over ninety-five feet long. It's listed beside that.
Let me phrase it this way. If there are peripheral lights, which we're not supposed to, just make sure that they don't shine down Route nine-ten.
Because we have two manors going in there, and I'd like to have a light above those manors just so you can see where they are.
Well, especially for safety and as far as that matter, it would help our police secure your facility if this is properly done. Are you all better off on and off? I've been here for thirty years. You know the problem. Is sure the problem. Thank you.
Okay, before we get a motion, would anybody in the public care to comment on this thing? Good? Okay. Anybody care to make a motion?
I would move that the planning commission recommend preliminary and final approval of the Allegheny Steel Distributor Site Plan, subject to the plan being revised to either show a connection between the proposed building and existing one-story block in the hillside building on the property, or the applicant a recent variance for eleven-foot space ensured on the plan. And that the recommendation also be commissioned on the applicant satisfying the other issues raised during the conference.
Good, Jeff? All right. Second motion. Second, Mr. Taylor, on the favor.
Aye.
Item is approved. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, instead of going to old business, we're going to reset our agenda here. We're going to go through the new business, and we are going to hear from MPF management on the request for a zoning map amendment. So is there someone here to represent MPF management? Please step to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Jake Polachek. I represent MPF management. I have Sean T. Coach and Phil Smith from MPF. I'm a little under the weather today. For some reason, I should just drop off the floor before the presentation's over. Dave will be able to take over.
Okay. Hang in there. We'll see if we can get through.
Let's see if we can get through. So I bring this portfolio, which is the one that I bring to my own planning commission meetings where I sit on it, my own home township. Generally, I sit on your side of the table.
Where's that at?
Upper St. Clair.
Just curious.
A few times I stand on this side of the table. And so I understand the burden that you have to go through when you consider matters such as these. So tonight, what I'm going to do, other than introduce you to us, is I'm going to tell you that why we are here asking for this zoning change. I'm going to tell you why I think it's good for the township, mutually good for the township and for our project, and why I think that it's proper to approve it and recommend approval to go up on our committee commission. And then answer any questions that you have. So if... John, did you have an extra one of those I could work on? So we have asked for this rezoning because if you take a look at your map, there is a... If we move to exhibit two, you say blue parcel, right in the middle. MPF is looking forward to a project where we will drill an unconventional oil and gas well here, just as Range Resources did a few years ago. And we were looking for the best place to do it. But we thought the right way to play it would be to come to the township and say, what do you think about this? Because after the amendment to the drilling a few years ago, the only place on that map that you can drill is in the purple. But if you go there and watch those properties, you will see that those are not the best place for this project. You're either too exposed to the public or very close to residential property. And that's really not which one to do for these type of projects. So after talking with the township, we realized that we should find a better place for this project. That blue property in the middle is the best place for it. It is not exposed to the public. It's not anywhere near any residential property. It has just been zoned office flex. When the new zoning came out, it was clear that you could not even ask for a conditional use in office flex. If you see on the map, the other office flex is far away, and it's actually useful in office flex. I have been on this property that we're asking for recently. It in no way could ever be used as office flex. If you flip to exhibit three, I was showing what it looks like from Route nine-ten. That's the only entrance to the property. If you flip to the next page, that's what it looks like from the interstate. It's basically a hillside that is hidden from the highway and the public. And if you flip to the next page, you'll see that it's...
Before you flip, I think it's important that you... Because you're taking this from the turnpike?
Yes.
Okay, so the overpass bridge is on the left side of the picture. That is Route nine-ten.
Correct.
Close to where you got this upper picture, where the gate is.
Correct.
Like we're going to drive.
Yeah. So I think what he's trying to show is the slope going down into where it's a ravine in the bottom of the property is where you'd like to drill.
That is very correct. And as we move forward through the presentation, you will see why this property is uniquely suited only for this use. And other potential properties where this project would be a conditional use are not conducive to it.
Would you do that? You had mentioned this property wouldn't be, quote, "exposed to the public."
Correct. I will lock it.
Can you help me understand how that would be?
Yes, I will.
Well, wait a second. I think we're getting way over our seats. You're asking for the zoning classification of this property to change.
Correct.
It would be improper for this planning commission to recommend approval of its own change only on account of one particular project that is very close to it, doesn't amount to a conditional zoning.
Absolutely. And we want to make sure that it's not...
So I think what you need to be addressing is not the propriety of using this property for oil and gas operations. It's whether this property, as it's currently zoned, has any value, any use, and what would be the impact on the zoning properties if it's rezoned to the classification you want it to be rezoned to, keeping in mind the universe, the entire gamut of uses that might be allowed in that district.
And Mr. McKeever, I intend to do that. I will show you how this is the only use this property can have.
Well, I'm not interested in the only use. I'm interested in what other uses and their potential impact. Because it looks to me like you've got a big piece of property.
Yes.
It may not be particularly developable right now, but we all know with enough money and enough effort, you can do just about anything, any piece of property. So I'm interested in...
When we get to exhibit four, I intend to explain why I think that would be a bad idea.
Okay.
But so for right now, I just simply want to show you why I think this property has been miszoned. If you look at this, these pictures from exhibit three, you will see that it cannot be used for office flex. It just, it simply can't.
Physically can't be used?
And I will show you that. I know for a fact. And so on exhibit four, I will show you the property we had initially identified for this project. It is of high visibility to nine-ten and seventy-six and very close to residential properties. But because it's light industrial, an unconventional well would be a conditional use permitted on it. But it just isn't the right place for it. When we want to do one of these projects, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to come in and find the place with the least impact on the community. And so that would be the alternative, a place that I do not think the residents of the township would want to be used as the drilling site because of its high visibility and close proximity to residential areas. So if we moved things to the five, I will show you why the proposed rezoned property is of a very low likelihood for any development. The township requires no development with forty percent slope without an incredible amount of investment and development cost. Nobody's going to do that at this property. I've locked this property. I encourage you all to do the same. There is no way anyone's going to incur those type of costs to develop anything at this property. All of the red you see in this map is over forty percent slope. And by your code, it requires a great deal of capital investment to even propose development. It just can't happen. This would be a property that could not be developed. And that's why we think that for this limited use, it is the best spot in the township. If you flip to the next page, you'll see the proposed rezoned property in light blue, the proposed development site for an unconventional oil and gas well. Next to it, in dark blue, you will see the proposed Allegheny Land Trust Deer Creek project. We think that these projects have a synergy. Our proposal is that after we purchase this property and develop it for the singular use of one drilling pad, this property will either be conserved to the benefit of Allegheny Land Trust or for Emmerling Park. If you look to the top and the middle of this map, you will see the Range Resources well pad site. And you will see that it is approximately the same size as our proposed well pad site. We have been in conversations with Range Resources, and they've agreed to joint venture on this project. We would be using their pipeline takeaway, their water transport. So it would be minimal impact to the community on this project. And once that pad is done, it will look no different than the pad that's already there at the top of the snap. The rest of the property will be conserved either to the township or to the Allegheny Land Trust. If you move to exhibit six, you will see that we've already reached out to Allegheny Land Trust and applied to conserve the rest of the property to them, which, if the township wants to happen, I have spoken with Chris Beaker at Allegheny Land Trust, and he told me that our donation of the land will ensure that the project occurs because they have to have enough capital investorsure into their projects. So the state will cover essentially the rest of the cost. So with our donation of the property, they will have already met and exceeded their expenditures on the project. And obviously, I can't come here today and promise anything, but I can tell you that is the goal of what we will do with the property when we're done with it. And that will, as you can see, I even think the Rachel Carson trail is depicted on the map, half of our property encompasses that. So it will be a great benefit to the conservation of property around this area. At the end, we simply added some exhibits that are your own comprehensive plan and your own oil and gas codes. As I said, I'm in the process of working on helping to draft our own new comprehensive plan in my township, and it's a very exciting thing to do because we talked about where you're going to put parts and where you're going to put needed density occupancies. It's, no, but it's fun to be a part of that.
But not self-storage. That's a joke.
Well, it's funny, we looked at the self-storage part as one of our first drilling options. But we looked at the comprehensive plan, and we believe that rezoning this is really, truly consistent with what your comprehensive plan set out to do. It said we're going to maximize the use of our property. We're going to find some places to put light industrial that works, and then we're going to find some office flex that we're just going to put wherever it's left. This, the proposed property can never be in office flex. It's never going to be. It's going to be a vacant property with development problems. This is the only use of it.
Well, I don't want to get over our skis here, but I just would like to know with my question, how this isn't exposed to public view, depending on where you're going to put it.
You're sort of, you can't see that? Okay, that is a great question. So if you flip over two pages, I will tell you that every... So this is the only exposure. It's nine-ten from that property, right here. This is all incredibly downgrade. This is down a mountainside, right here. When you are here, and I encourage you to drive by and lock it, this is incredibly downgrade. The pad will be down here. No one will ever know it's there. The only people that will ever know it's there is the fellow that knows the little sliver next door that has a tree stand there. You might not enjoy it for about ten months, but then after that, you won't buy it. There will be deer running to his property and not... And you can actually get a permit to hunt deer on ALT property, so he'll be okay with And again, we're not here today to ask you if we can drill a well pad there. That is a different conversation for a different day. But if we can't rezone this property, we won't buy it, and we will proceed to try to move this project forward on the already purple designated areas on that map, which, honestly, they're not the right places to do it. They're visible, they're near residential, they are not the right places to do this project. This is the right property to do it. It simply needs to be rezoned. And if we could have a time machine and go back five years, what year was the jury amendment? Five years ago, this could have been done easily on office flex.
June eleventh, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, there you go. We could have done without question then, but just like every township, ordinance have to come into place to make everyone protected, and that's what you guys did.
Anything else before I launch on some questions?
I am ready for the arsenal.
Okay. I got one question. Go ahead. It's a good one. You mentioned the neighbor with the tree stand. Can you show me where that is? What property that is? Is that that sliver that long?
The sliver, the long sliver next door, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Just if you walk back there, well, there is the remnants of a hunting camp from circa nineteen seventy, yes.
But there's a sliver that's between Emmerling Park and this parcel.
Yes. Correct. And if you go back...
I wasn't aware there was a separate property there.
If you go back so you can see them actually carved out, I think, right there in the blue?
No, see, that's all... Yeah, and there would be zone same.
They're the same. We're not asking to rezone them.
That's not your parcel, just this one, not that sliver.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Kevin.
Does this property have frontage on nine-ten?
The smallest sliver. So if you look at, I think the map you're looking at depicts it the best.
Okay.
Literally, enough to mark the car.
So anybody who wanted to access the property from nine-ten, that's where it is?
Correct. So all of, whatever, whatever...
Sorry, Jeff?
That's the only access.
Okay.
Whatever construction we needed would come from that accessible, yes.
Jeff, that's where the gate and roadway is now?
That's where the gate is. So because as soon as you go past that gate, you look downgrade, and you're looking over a cliffside, yes.
But presumably, somebody could put a driveway there and could put a office building on the five point seven five acres that you proposed for pad, right?
I do not believe so, because if you look at, if you go back to the map with the forty percent grading, it would never be cost-effective to do that.
Well, except that if I'm looking at the map, I think you put the pad in a relatively flat area, which is where if I was looking to put an office building, I'd think it's the same thing, too. So I'm just, I mean, I'm just curious as to, I mean, you keep saying the property can't possibly be developed. Maybe it, maybe it can only be developed if somebody's willing to put investment into it. But I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to say it can't possibly be developed. I mean, I'm looking, looking at your map, I see where the entrance comes in, and I'm not seeing a lot of red where the five point seven five acres would be.
With all due respect, this is the only access sliver.
Yeah. And you come back up, and you end up in here. That's where it is.
I've blocked it.
I think the safe question, Jake, is have you guys shot a slope on current access driveway? What kind of slope are you talking about? John?
Because there's... How much is intended to the fact? Questions about that?
If it exceeds a certain slope, which our engineers call that odd, I mean, in public.
In all fairness, this is our problem as we move forward. So if we purchase a property and we can't overcome the next hurdles, then we'll just own a property that we can't even get with.
Yeah, my point is, you know, change, keep the office flex and put a commercial building down there, it might not work due to the slope getting into the property. And that's exceeding property twenty percent.
But what I'm hearing is that there's a way to get onto this property, and a way to get onto this property to drill a well. And my question is, if there's a way to get onto this property to drill a well, isn't there also a way to get onto this property to develop an office? But that's what I'm saying.
Well, may I just...
If we do that, we don't know that. If we do that, it would be...
Well, just to interject, if we go all the way back to the end, the last exhibit, it talks about the hurdles to overcome the township's restrictions on building forty percent slope or more. No one is going to do this for a small building. No one is going to do this for a small building. This project is going to be a tens of millions, if not hundreds million dollar project. No one is going to do all of these restrictive things to build a five-thousand-foot office building back there. It would be insane. No one would ever be able to afford it. I'm sorry. I mean...
No, that's okay. I was looking at it.
And that's why I'm saying it would be prohibitive. This property is essentially undevelopable as an office flex.
Okay, back to my original question. I'm going to throw, Dan, Dan, what would a slope be on an access road for a public use or a minimal type thing? What would be...
Not to exceed foot, not to exceed foot percent.
So if, the only thing I'm saying, Kevin, is if it's a twenty, twenty-five percent of a number, it's already exceeding what we would allow to approve for some type of an office build. But for a minimal type use like this, we're going to get on a twenty-five percent slope with their equipment, and it'd be offsite.
But as we sit here tonight, we don't know. I mean, you're probably correct. It's greater than twelve percent. We don't know that for a hundred percent.
I know it should be greater.
That's just my...
So I can tell you from just my own personal experience, I've locked it. It's more than twelve percent.
So if this zoning classification is changed as you request, might not other uses happen on this property to grow?
They could. And again, sitting on your side of the table, I always ask the same question, but I can assure you, this is the only possible use for it. Do you always run that risk if you rezone it? Yes, could you put down here, what's the worst thing you could think of? Whatever that is.
A drilling pad?
It won't be conducive for it, again, because the driveway to the tattoo parlor down there just won't, won't work.
All right. Well, I also have a legal question. I don't want to put John on the spot here because Kevin isn't here. But I'm not entirely convinced that this wouldn't, this doesn't have the potential to be challenged on a spot zoning basis.
And of course, we always wanted to know if that was going to be concerned. We are confident that it is not. It is adjacent to the other light industrial. In fact, we have recently lost light industrial.
It's not adjacent, it's separated by a six-lane highway.
Well, I think that is the adjacent property.
No, it's not. Look, let's not stranglehold it too much. It's not adjacent to any other light industrial property. You've got a six-lane interstate highway between it and the other light industrial property. That's like saying Indiana Township's adjacent to Oakmont.
And you are familiar with what the other light industrial across the highway is?
Yeah, it's...
It is a... It is a oil and gas refinery.
And that, and that may very well be. My point is, it's not adjacent to any existing light industrial properties now. And I'm not going to put you on the spot, I'm not going to put John on the spot, but I think somebody needs to analyze whether a zone change of this height might not be challenged on a spot zoning basis. I know there are cases in Pennsylvania that talk about large tracts can be subject to spot zoning if they're treated in a way that basically makes them an island.
Mr. Keegan, I'm familiar with all of those and I understand why you would ask. I would say that we are adjacent, and if you look at your own comprehensive plan, the only place appropriate for light industrial, according to your own comprehensive plan, is across the nine ten corridor. We, we are now losing light industrial right across the street for development. I would say we are adjacent to light industrial across the highway. Who owns underneath that highway? I don't know. So is it adjacent? I don't know. I haven't checked the title on that. Maybe there's a couple of feet between us and that, but we're very close. I would say it's very consistent with your comprehensive plan. It's as adjacent as we could be. And it makes up for lost light industrial.
Well, unless it's put together in a non-conventional category. Perhaps in getting, perhaps in getting some research.
Should someone challenge that? I suppose they could. But I think that if ever there's been one closer than this that has lost, I would be surprised.
So moving on to my next concern. This property is bordered on what amounts to free size by medium density residential. Now, it doesn't look like that medium density residential has been developed. Is that correct?
And it won't be, because if you look at the Deer Creek, if you look at the Deer Creek property, you'll see that this will now be adjacent to conserve land.
Plus the park.
Plus the park. And everything else is down in the flood. Nothing will ever be developed around this well. No one will even see it. And no resident in this township will be able to see that from their house.
Has the land trust, you, it looks like you've, you've asked them to consider it.
Yes, we wanted to put that as an exhibit, just to tell you that, and now I can tell you, as an option of the court, I have spoken with them, and they are very interested and it perhaps being a part of it, because it can be very beneficial to them because of the equitable value to their project. But we have made a formal application to them. Would you consider this to be a part of your project?
And they're aware that your plans are to put a well pad on this?
Yes, I've spoken with the district.
Jeff, I got a question for you. Is that land trust with the conservancy, is that actually in place?
No.
That's still under consideration.
And I would, I would add that, of course, whatever reason, if the Allegheny Land Trust simply abandoned that project, we are permitted to conserve this property. So we would work with you to make it part of Emerald Park, but we really can't make those promises here today. That's just something improper to even do at this hearing. But that's what we will do.
I was just curious about the land. We haven't got any formal notification on that. The conservancy.
They have, they have a lot of steps.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just curious if it was formalized.
Always. I'm just waiting for you to toss things.
Please proceed, please.
Sure thing. So we did have an advisory meeting with the applicant, that being Jeff, Kurt, and myself, when, several months ago. And I was asked to take a look at this relative to this piece of property and what it could be. So we put together a letter dated April twenty second, two thousand twenty-four. And as, Jake? Jake, okay. As Jake indicated, it, currently it's owned Office Flex Commercial. The proposed zoning amend, or map amendment would turn it into light industrial. I put for the Plenary Commission's information, a quick summary of Office Flex Commercial and Light Industrial, just to kind of give you a flavor of the two different zones. As Jake indicated on the map, oh, let me digress a little bit, a couple, a couple notes. The first of which is that the township recently in the past, is it your, your Jeff, two years? Have gone through two zoning map revisions, one for Blue Run Road, or Blue Run Development. And the other one was, I can't remember the other map amendment. There was one other one.
It's on Deer Creek.
Oh, yeah, that's correct.
Way at the very end of, all right, where was it? Those are the west deer.
Correct. So those are the last two. So when we sat down and looked at what they were proposing, and looked at the, I want to say the original site, which is a lot closer to the residential areas, which would, would be a problem, even though it's a conditional permitted use where, where they were originally looking at. I agree that, you know, putting a well pad at that site, although it's, it's a more permitted use than what they're proposing now, I think would have been a problem for the township personally. And looking at where they're putting it or proposing it now, I don't want to say that this was the consolation prize, but at least this particular site is far enough away from residential areas, as Jake indicated. As soon as you go out through that access road, you pretty much drop to a plateau. It's probably twenty to thirty feet down. You're not going to see this thing, although when they're drilling it, yeah, you will see the stacks. There's no doubt about it.
On the thirty feet? You've never been on a buffer either.
Sixty, seventy, it's, it's eight.
Oh, okay. I was just looking at some of the contours even. I can't see them. Looking, but it, it's enough that you're not going to see anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I apologize. We could larger maps to have when I saw your one.
No, it's not going to help me at all.
That's not going to help you.
Unless you can tell me what.
But we're talking like sixty feet.
At least sixty, but probably. Eighty foot elevation change.
If you're down closer to the cliff level.
The point is it, it's substantially down, is the point. So when you look at this site, I mean, does anybody really want an unconventional drilling rig in the end of the township? Probably not. Does it work? In my opinion, it does, if you're going to make that change. The other side of the coin is, is part of the process with a zoning map revision. It'll be required to go through a public hearing process, in which case everybody would have an opportunity to voice their, the pleasure or displeasure of what's going on. And based on what, what they could do and what they're proposing, I don't necessarily see a problem with it.
And with that being said, when they met with us and they told us their option A proposal, the first thing I did was shake my head and go ask them. And, and I said, looking at the bigger picture, what other areas could you put a vein in? It works for where the location you're looking at that is more conducive to no impact to residents. And they said, well, this direction. And I pointed out that this property, knowing the topography of it, down by the creek, I thought would be a better spot, because I don't want to see them come back and impact, you know, Black Oak Development. It's going to be in the backyard. Yes, I'm going to go over well. And rightfully so. So I'm not saying I'm for this by any means, but didn't want it in option A, because that's not going to work.
And if anyone would flip back to the zoning map, I would show you what our first proposal was.
It's like Preston's?
It's the.
Palette Company.
But it is.
It's right behind Block, right?
But that doesn't make it conducive for this, this project. And so we were simply wondering if we could turn that light blue one purple. It would make it a much better palette, if you will, for the project. And keep in mind, by rezoning, you have not agreed that we can do this project.
You're still, you're still under a conditional use.
We are prepared to come back here probably five more times to talk about that.
I think based on what you said, Jeff, about access, the original zoning just doesn't fly because you can't get into the property for anything.
Correct.
Here, this would, would be very limited. Heavy for a while, and then next to nothing after that.
Correct.
Correct. And I know there was a lot of concern about the first well pad we put in. And it went in and people didn't even notice.
We would be working with Range as well.
I like the fact that they're coming directly off an arterial road instead of a township road. Not going past the park. And that's, that's big. I mean, because if they pick option A, they're going past, you know, Emerald Ice Cream up nine ten and turning into Nams to get down into that hole. And, you know, again, Black Oak Development being right there is going to be in their backyard. And I don't like it.
Now, if, if, if this were, were to be approved, if in the future you've got a conditional use, you drill your well, how do you get the gas to market? What do you have to do to get?
That is the benefit of working with Range. We would be piping it directly to their pad. We will be getting water from their water source already, so there won't be water trucks, with very limited truck impact. We will mobilize the site, we'll be bringing your equipment. That's a very limited time. The water will be piped into the site, the gas will be piped to their site. All of the easements are already in place for all of these things. Very limited impact. No one will notice.
I know a big concern with the truck traffic with the water.
There won't, there won't be that.
Two thousand trucks.
Correct.
Did you say you have an easement?
Yes.
Agreed upon to go through.
Correct. And that's why we're working, we're going to work with Range Resource on this project, because they already control all of the, the takeaway easements and the water easements.
So they're only dealing with two properties. They're dealing with the property that they're interested in, and then the Miller property, which AKA may also at some point be Allegheny Land Trust. So they're only going through two, and then they're crossing one township road, which we're going to go around.
And the creek.
And the creek.
I would assume that requires all kinds of special apartments, right?
Yeah, they'll have to. Yes.
Where is the gas you want to get out of the water?
Oh, okay. Well, that's a fair question. We did make a.
A tri-graphic map?
No, they talked about really the drilling unit itself.
Yeah. I mean, you can just, I mean, you just want to show me generally on that thing.
It's, it's all here.
Okay.
So it's going to go, it's going to help Emerald Park develop the rest of its gas from its lease, and then go down, all the way down until there's a weird sort of reclamation site down here. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Think in Harmer Town.
Correct. But it will encompass more of Ellington Park, so the township will be receiving.
So I take it it's not possible to reach that by a horizontal well on the existing pad?
No. If you, they, they're drilled all the way out. If you, I wish, and I apologize for that.
That's okay.
I'll be more prepared with that next time. We will show you that they are drilled all the way out. And from their pad, they have harvested as much as they can in this direction. So we're going to essentially be moving to the south-ish, southish, east, west-ish. I don't know what you call it, just. We're moving to the South America.
It will develop directly adjacent to that pad.
Directly adjacent. And it'll go all the way pretty much down to the river.
At the river?
Not, you know, like in Harmerville, down.
Yep, all the way down.
So a very quick question related to zoning, but option A, let's talk option A. If you were to go with option A, zoning already fits, you come in as a conditional use?
Correct.
How are you getting to the pipeline from there?
Harder work, but it would happen.
That's, that's again why I didn't want it.
And it's just not the right place. I mean, you could drive by it, you can see it's not the right place to put a well pad. It's right, if you, you could look out the car window and throw a pop can.
But that was your proposal coming in.
Well, it's the best we could do.
That's why I said that you.
You can reach the transmission line less than a dozen parcels. Water is a problem. It's not near enough to the Miller pad.
Right.
To utilize the existing infrastructure.
Correct.
My name's Jonathan T. Coach for the record.
I did say this is Bill Smith from MPF.
I can't help myself.
Bill, was there something you wanted to add?
If not, may. My name is Bill Smith. I'm one of the managing members of MPF. Management, I'm also a licensed real estate broker. I contracted to buy this property. This property's been on the market for quite a while. It's been under contract and it's fallen through due to the uses that those buyers intended. One of them, I think, being senior housing. It's very, very, very challenging to develop, and the return on investment to the dirt there, it's just, it doesn't work. For our use, it would work in terms of the return on investment, which is why I think personally we're overpaying for it. But here we are. Also, I have, I was just recently in the closing with Allegheny Land Trust CEO there, Christopher Beckman. We talked about the Millers property, they intend to, they're in the process of purchasing. And we brought up this property. They're very interested. They would like to conserve it. So we, we just, I just wanted to mention in terms of the questions, in terms of using this property for something else, it is a very challenging property to develop. Offices with COVID, that market and the real estate market and the commercial real estate market is in a tank. It's the worst market. Self-storage is much better. This is not a good property for self-storage. I just, I just wanted to share some insight from being a real estate broker and looking at this property, a little bit of background.
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm not a zoning lawyer, but I think we have two, two zoning lawyers up here. You know, it sounds like, or what I'm hearing is that we should at least look into the spot zoning issue. So we're not overly risking that. Otherwise, I think that's, that's the one concern I would have at this point.
I would only note that in our pre-planning meeting, I think attorney, his first name is Gavin, I'm not sure.
Gavin Robb.
Robb. Had reviewed that, believed at the time that he didn't see a concern with the rezoning being spot zoning. I don't want to speak for him, but that is my memory of that conversation at our planning meeting. We could ask, if we were to ask for what our approval would be, you could add a condition that that be reviewed prior to the public hearing. What we were requesting today is a vote for a public hearing in front of the council, which takes some time for publication purposes. We're not asking for approval, we just need to get to our public hearing.
Well, just to be clear, we're under no time pressure to consider this, number one. Number two, before the public hearing, can we schedule this? This is going to have to go past the county.
It does.
Number three, I think Peter's exactly correct. I'm not prepared to take action on this until I see some research on the spot zoning question. So, and all we can do at the end of the day, by the way, is just make a recommendation anyway. So I don't know why we wouldn't just table this until next month, but you'd get Gavin and John a chance to research this and give us something right into that question.
Unravelable. Before we do it formally, though, I would like to solicit any public comments before, before complete on that.
I want to say something.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. At this point, anybody in the audience?
Sure.
John Newman, two-two-two, Chatham Lane. Just have a few quick questions for the presenters. Is that okay?
That's fine.
From you guys to them. Basically, more about the mechanics with this ALT deal. I know among board supervisors, and they came up, gave a presentation. My understanding is they have a year to raise two-point-five million in order to get the matching grants to secure that property. I guess I'm trying to figure out, this is just an informal conversation you're having. Correct?
So, if we donate them our land, it'll go towards what they need to raise equitable?
I guess, my question is, you're donating in kind, correct? You want to have an in-kind donation of the real estate. I just don't see how you could get through the drilling that you need to do to donate the land. Are you talking about donating all the?
It's okay. The property they're buying is the one that Range already drilled. It's okay. So, what would happen?
The one-hundred acre closing, I was just in with them, there are seven wells on a property.
Yeah.
And they, and they know that we had planned to drill a well on this property, and they still want, they still want it.
But you would transfer title to them before that one-year window that they have?
We would retain an easement for the location.
For the area.
For the area where the ad site would be.
Do you happen to have extra copies of correspondence with, honestly?
We all are a couple of emails, but the application that's been filed, my understanding is the two-point-five they have to raise is the full amount, and they only need to raise two to.
Feel free to have my copy.
Between two and four hundred thousand in cash donations and/or fully donated property before they receive the grants for the remaining money.
Okay.
Which they have lined up. They need to raise the, that contribution amount.
Yeah.
That they confirmed in a phone call only so far that the land donation would be helpful to them.
Yeah. Because I think something binding contractually, if this process moves along, makes a big difference because that is a big piece of the puzzle. We need some sort of public benefit. We really would like to get that land with the Miller property, so, you know, a nice little handshake deal doesn't go that far.
Did you say you're on the board?
Of course, supervisors. So, these guys, I, I, I wear my civilian hats. I'm just a citizen.
So, just to let you know, we, we've literally applied to get into their process because it's very complex process. It's actually in their approved application. And we are going to, before we get anything further, like conditional uses, we'll already have some deal in place with them. It'll be, when we buy this property, it'll be a covenant in the deed, if that sounds good.
All right, great. More correspondence you have with those guys, better. So.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My question is, so this is just on the zoning. Yeah, Nettie Owens, one-on-nine, Brinerd. This is just on the zoning, right? So, any questions about the use of it are for later. It feels like we're getting ahead of ourselves as we did on other properties like Blue Run. Same thing happened. It was already set. What was going to happen with it? And that's why they were rezoning it. So, I'm just curious about any environmental impact to rezoning? And are we considering that? I mean, I've heard a lot of consideration about, you know, whether it's visible to the public and not in my backyard, but, you know, what about the creek and what about other, like, what impact would, like, would, what was it, commercial?
Like.
Office flex commercial have had versus any zoning changes? So, are we considering that part of it? And I, and I get what their proposal is, but just in general, if we're considering a zoning change, are we considering that?
So, any property, third-party approvals, excuse me, are always in play. So, before any dirt can be moved, as these gentlemen will tell you, this is that there's going to be a series, a series of about five permits that they have to secure, any one of which could stop the project.
But I think in answer your specific question, it actually isn't a very good question. What you're thinking about changing the zoning classification of the property, and again, all we can do is make a recommendation. Supervisors should be taking those sorts of things into account. And they need to be making a balance between the potential development opportunities, the current zoning, the potential opportunity, development opportunities for everything under the proposed zoning, not just what they want to do. That was, that was, that was my concern, that we were getting too far into a specific project without considering everything else that could happen on that property. And they're also supposed to weigh the general public benefit to changing the zoning classification. That doesn't specifically speak to those environmental concerns, but it's certainly part of them. So, so it is something that the supervisors should be considering.
But may, may I just add? If we put a well pad there?
Yeah, that's not, I'm not.
It will have ten times more regulation to it.
Yeah, that's not, that's not my question. And when we're talking about.
You could go on a specific use, Jake.
I know, I.
And not, not my question, but thank you.
Okay, I guess that said, Kevin, you want to make the motion to your discussing?
Move to table this for further discussion at the next meeting. And with the.
Rezoning review.
Request of the solicitor's office that they provide us with a legal analysis of the spot zoning question.
Yeah, I would second that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. McKegan to table. Second by Mr. Blum. All in favor?
Aye.
Table till next time.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Okay. Next is our old business, back to our revisions to the PRD section. I guess. Again, gentlemen, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Legel, you going to kick off on this?
Always.
You got it.
I can't believe you're asking that question.
I was going for it.
Okay. So, at the last planning commission meeting, we broadly went over several different things. One, of course, is the revised draft as prepared by Kevin. The second is, is that I handed out a presentation to the board that included an overview of basically what a PRD is, followed by. What our current zoning ordinance outlines relative to which, which, where PRDs are allowed and not allowed. The next was, is that the current densities. The third document in that proposal had to do with, is the difference of how a standard subdivision would look relative to one that had open space preservation. Then a table that, that I passed out again here for the board's information, had had to do with the current zoning density versus what the, the current SADO zoning density versus the current PRD zoning density, and then three proposals. And then it also went into the current comprehensive plan. It also provided a historical outlook over the past, I'm going to say close to forty years, of which developments that were presented at the township, also as to where those PRDs were located, and then finally, a cost-benefit analysis that I put together, was also provided to the planning commission members. So, after that meeting, the thought was is to give that information as well as other information as provided by Kevin and actually each one of the planning commission members, and to take a look at how all of that kind of fit together. So, what I did was in the handout that I, there's basically a marked-up version of what Kevin had provided. And, and a lot of the markings that are in Kevin's draft was based on the, how can I say that? It's not the lawsuit, but it had to do with the interpretation by the, by the Commonwealth Court. And a lot of that had to do with the word variety. And what's that other word begins with H? Harmonious. And, and there's numerous other little words that really were kind of hard, at least from an.